Amen. I'll face the flag. And as we say, our pledge allegiance to the greatest country on earth lets me be mindful of the sacrifices of our POWs and MIA's and our commitment to Israel. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, Madam Clerk, would you be kind enough to call a roll?
Councilwoman Taylor.
Present.
Councilman Brooks.
Here.
Councilman Tyler Farrell.
Here, ma'am.
Councilman Butcher. Councilman Jackson.
Here.
Councilman Green.
I'm here.
And Councilwoman Bowman-Bolman.
Present.
Thank you very much. Tomorrow, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of this special administrative conference meeting Monday, September 25th, 2023, and city council meeting Tuesday, September 26th, 2023. Does any member of the council have any awards recognition of distinguished guests not to exceed 15 minutes?
I will tomorrow.
Tomorrow? Thank you. Today, I have a guest, the director of the airport, Mr. Larry Blackwell. Mr. Larry, will you come up, please? Thank you so much for coming today, and I know you're busy, but in my district, the Mooretown area, all over, they're having those big planes that's coming over and it's disturbing them. Have some 90-year-old people, 80-year-old people that they say is interrupting their rest. Also, Mr. Antoine has a studio, and while he's recording, then the big planes comes over his studio and disturb them. Of course, also where my church is, they come over there doing, I mean, they just real loud, interrupt the sound system and all of it. So can you tell us what has happened and how long will it be going on at this time?
Absolutely. Good afternoon. The airport's currently undergoing a lighting modernization project, which requires our primary runway to be closed, and that runway runs roughly north-south, so that's where most of our traffic goes, probably 90% of it uses that runway. During this project, we're forced to use the crosswind runway, which is east-west, and that's why you're hearing more traffic over the city than normal. This project is supposed to last, it should be completed by Thanksgiving of this year. They are making great progress on it. Once these LED lights are installed, it's going to save us a tremendous amount of money on energy costs and maintenance and upkeep of the lighting system at the airport.
Okay. So you're saying that hold on till Thanksgiving, it'll be a Thanksgiving?
Well, one of the other things we've done, when this project started, we sent out a press release on the 18th, and we do field calls, the staff fields calls routinely from citizens regarding the noise and lets them know what we're doing. But with air traffic control, they're doing their best to have traffic depart to the west and arrive from the east to minimize the noise, and they've also requested aircraft to climb immediately to 4,000 feet and stay on runway headings, so they're not turning out over the neighborhoods, to do our best to minimize the noise impact to the community.
Yes, sir. Okay. Well, thank you very much, and at least I'll know how to talk to them about it.
The contractor's working as fast as they can on it, and we'll let you know when it's finished, hopefully earlier than anticipated.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right. Mr. Mayor, do you have any awards recognition of distinguished guests not to exceed 15 minutes?
I don't have any awards. I did want to let the council know that two appointees are present today, in case y'all have any questions. Ms. Melissa Anderson, raise your hand, Melissa, who's a nominee for the zoning board of appeals, and Mr. Raymond Alley. Mr. Raymond Alley is not on your agenda yet, but he is an appointee for the airport authority.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, do you have any other communications related to city business?
I don't, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Does any member have any questions or concern related to property standards from Mr. Green? Anyone?
I'm good. I got the address for you, but I'll talk to you later. I'll make sure. Thank you.
Everyone should receive their revenue collection plan and implementation report. We have no public hearing, but at this time, we'd like to have a city attorney minutia to read the legislations about the council decorum at this particular time, and also read the rules for point of order.
Sure. Decorum: City council meetings shall be conducted in a fair and impartial manner that allows the business of the city to be effectively undertaken. Persons appearing before the council shall not make personal, impertinent, unduly repetitive, inflammatory, slanderous, or profane remarks to the council, any member of the council, or the general public; utter loud, threatening, personal, or abusive language likely to incite outbursts from the audience; engage in any other conduct that is likely to disrupt, disturb, or otherwise unreasonably impede the orderly conduct of the council meeting; continue to address the council once they have left the podium, nor engage in conversation with the council from their seat. Chair shall maintain orderly conduct of public meetings. The chair shall maintain orderly conduct of meetings and shall have the right to eject any person from the public meeting when the person disrupts the orderly proceedings of the council, or does not adhere to the time limit to speak after being notified their time to speak has expired. To provide the speaker with the opportunity to comply with the rules set out herein, the chair shall exercise control over persons who disrupt the meeting in the following progressive order of action. One, attempt to call the person to order via verbal warning to any speaker or attendee that is violating the rules of decorum and advising them of the infraction. However, a verbal warning is not required as a condition of removal from the meeting if there is imminent danger or threat. Two, if the violation continues, advise the person that the infraction must cease immediately, or the person will be ordered to leave the meeting. Three, order the person to leave the meeting. And four, if the person refuses to leave the meeting, the chair may order any public safety officer in attendance to remove the person from the meeting room. No person shall be prevented from speaking or barred from attendance because of any disagreement with the speaker's view on any matter or because of the speaker's identity.
Do you have the piece on the point of order?
Point of order: The chair has the authority and duty to make necessary rulings on questions of procedure and parliamentary law. However, when a member thinks that the rules or procedure in parliamentary law are being violated, he can immediately make a point of order, point of order, Mr. Chair, thereby calling upon the chair for a ruling and enforcement of the rule. The point of order may be made when another person has the floor, even interrupting the person speaking, if the point genuinely requires attention at such a time. The point of order does not require a second. It is not debatable. It is ruled on by the chair, and no vote is taken unless the chair is in doubt or his ruling is appealed.
Thank you. Are there any questions from anyone? Thank you. Mr. Dart, would there be any legislation added tomorrow?
Not to my knowledge, sir.
Thank you. Today, we will hear public comments on non-agenda items and agenda items as well. At this time, the chair will control the names and the time.
We have three minutes.
Also, in IT, I don't know who can put my mic on red, the pause, and it keeps coming back to green. Okay, thank you. Okay, at all times, thank you. Okay.
You have three minutes to speak. Ken Krupp.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Ken Krupp, 157 Archer, Shreveport.
The mic that's right in front of you.
This one?
Yes.
I was parliamentary in once, and I would raise my hand if somebody would say, "Poo, poo, point of order, point of order." But I want to thank the mayor, chief of police, Wayne Smith, HR director, US Marshal, all those good folks who came to the 164 Archer Avenue block party last Tuesday night. You were at a house that was dedicated today, 100 years ago. Ms. Haney moved in on October 8th, 1923. Little history there. Didn't know that, I'll bet you. And it was just a lot of fun. A lot of good food was served. We could have used the fire department with a hose for that five-alarm chili to kind of spray it on our mouth, but we have a couple major proposals, not really on the agenda, going into 24, 20% water rate and a $3 sanitation fee. The water rate is distasteful. It's got AlJ in it, but it's necessary. We have to keep the proper percentage for our bond rating. I do think we need to be sure we're not over or undercharging our ratepayers. Few years ago, I didn't know, but, you know, in February of '21, I got a $69.79 check on Pernice versus Shreveport. It came in two days before Snowmageddon hit, came in on Friday, the 12th. Let's be sure we're charging the right amount before we raise amounts. I know we need more, but what if we're overcharging right now, or if we're undercharging? So let's be clear on that. On the sanitation fee, we're kind of reinstating the recycling fee plus 50 cent, but it was first proposed to be $18 by the prior mayor, and the council voted that down seven love. And when I spoke, the late James Flurry from Dr. Jackson's District East said, "Ken, what do you think it should be?" I said, "Six to eight dollars." They settled on seven. That's when the cost was estimated in ordinance 17 of 2019? Because we first paid this, or I first paid it in May of '19, the $7. The total sanitation cost was supposed to be $8,411,000. I think that was actually underpriced. I think it was already about $12 million then, but we settled on seven. But the $3 would go into effect, I think, in January. I haven't looked at the ordinance carefully, but I think it would be effective for next year. But let's be very careful on both accounts that these amounts are necessary and that everything. And the final thing is, sometimes we see things right in front of us, and we don't make the call. So in this case, we see a need, I think.
Mr. Krupp.
And we need to make the call to raise these, unfortunately. Like I say, AlJ.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Craig Lee.
If you could in the future have a clock.
We're waiting on IT to fix this.
You don't have it anymore?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Hopefully, Mr. Krupp, they will come in by the end of the month and have these repaired, so we will be able to see when the time is up as well.
Thank you.
Passing information out, I'm glad the clerk went over the decorum rules, because I actually printed it out for you. I did that on purpose, because we have to be very clear as to the first aspect of the decorum for the Shreveport City Council, because it says making personal, impertinent statements. So since the decorum rule is being targeted at myself, I have not made any personal defamatory statements. Every statement is about the business of the Shreveport City Council. On Craig Lee, 1112 Prospect Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, on September 12th, 2023, a 43 vote by council members Brooks, Bowman, Tyler Farrell, and Butcher was passed to wrongfully terminate the employment of Shreveport City Council Clerk, Attorney Shenereka Flemings. This highly unethical procedure has placed the City of Shreveport, Shreveport City Council in a position of being held liable for Attorney Flemings' wrongful termination. After Attorney Flemings disclosed claims of, number one, ethnic racial insensitivity, number two, hostile work environment, and number three, sexual harassment, the four council members, Brooks, Bowman, Tyler Farrell, and Butcher still proceeded to wrongfully terminate the employment of Attorney Flemings without, number one, any due process, which includes investigating her claims, and number two, exercising the Louisiana legal standard and covenant of implied good faith and fair dealing. This gross negligence on behalf of the four council members, Brooks, Bowman, Tyler Farrell, and Butcher, violated their oath of office and their fiduciary responsibilities to the City of Shreveport, thus exposing the City of Shreveport to a potential lawsuit. This is the basis of all of the information that I provided, and I'm glad that we are going over the decorum rules, because one of the things that has been falsely promoted by Councilman Butcher is that mentioning a council member's name is some type of personal attack. I'm sorry to tell you, that's not the case, because any individual who seeks office, they now are also identified by their name. We can't identify a councilman just by saying the councilman or the council lady. So from that overall standpoint, that is the reality of this. And lastly, I'm glad that as a part of the decorum, no person shall be prevented from speaking or barred from attendance because of any disagreement with the speaker's view on any matter or because of the speaker's identity. Now, there needs to be decorum, but these rules have sought to censure and silence individuals. But those two things, I'm glad to see that the council didn't go so far as to violate completely the civil rights, civil liberties, and the Constitution and the First Amendment for individuals. But everything that I've stated is about the fiduciary responsibilities, because when you fire someone, terminate them without investigation, you do not have that point of order.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bobby Flowers.
How many?
Three.
Thank you all for allowing me to speak here. I'm here on behalf of the residents, the parents, grandparents, of the Cherokee Park neighborhood. They are very concerned that sexual predators, child sexual predators, have been given housing in the neighborhood where their kids have to walk to school near the school bus, and they didn't know anything about the sexual predators was being moved in there, and they have been unable to reach their council person, Ms. Taylor. And so that is the reason why I'm here. I've just turned in some paperwork for you all to please pay attention to this very serious problem, because I'm quite sure many of you probably have children, and you probably do not want sexual predators' housing to be moved into your neighborhood, especially without your knowledge, and even if you had the knowledge of it, you probably would be protesting against it. Thank you very much.
Ms. Flowers.
Yes.
To what you are speaking of, this is the first time that I've heard of this, and when it comes to sexual predators moving into the neighborhood, or when they're released, that's not something that falls under the city's jurisdiction. I would believe, Mr. Mayor, you could correct me, that we will be looking at the corrections department and going in and seeing that, because there are so many feet that they're supposed to not live in reference to a school zone. When I spoke to Ms. Phillips this morning, this was the first that I've heard in reference to this, and in returning phone calls, I've not received any phone calls on this. My first time hearing about it was today. And so therefore, when I told her about it, then I let her know that I will get with the DA as it relates to this, regarding these particular offenders, because I don't know how far they live from the school. I see that there is an influx in some of these particular numbers, and the numbers that you have on here, it's not my city cell. I will provide you with my city cell, if you're going to stay after the meeting.
Sure. I did turn in a petition with their signature on it.
Yes, I see that.
And with the majority of the people there that I've spoken with, they said that they have been unable to reach you, but thank you for paying attention to me here.
You are more than welcome, but I assure you that the majority of these individuals here, even when I was at the block party, they all have my telephone number, and they have my city cell.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, hopefully, you all will look into that and get that solved.
Yes.
And the gentlemen have also been putting a bed out in their front yard.
Say that again?
The gentlemen, the sexual predators, they have put a bed inside of their front yard. We do have a picture of that. I forgot to get the, I failed to get the picture from them to add that into the.
But my question is, have you all called the sheriff?
From what I understand, they have spoken to a sheriff person.
Okay, because these individuals fall under the sheriff's office.
Okay, well, hopefully, you'll be able to help them with that.
Yeah, yes. What I'm saying is, for you all to make sure that you call the sheriff's office, because it's regulated by the parish and not the city.
Yes.
I'll give him a call, but I want you all to make sure that you follow up with the sheriff's office.
Okay, well, they have contacted the sheriff, I know that, and so they asked me today to try to find out what's the sheriff's name that the person, you know, spoke to for them, because there is another person working on this.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you.
Kayla, is it Kaya?
Kaya. I'm having a, excuse my allergies, I'm having a flyer passed around. Good afternoon, my name is Kayla Kaya, and I'm the reentry community coordinator for Caddo and Bossier parishes. On behalf of Goodwill Industries of North Louisiana, in partnership with the Department of Public Safety and Corrections, I'm here today to invite all of you to Northwest Louisiana's first reentry simulation. As of last Wednesday, there were 2,766 people under felony supervision in Caddo Parish. This number does not include your constituents who have been incarcerated and released and not required to do supervision, or those who have completed their supervision and been discharged. So that number of people that live in your parish that have been through probation and parole supervision is actually higher than the current 2,766. These individuals have to navigate situations that you and I have never experienced, and in the position you're in, it must be difficult to make decisions affecting and helping people whose experiences you cannot relate to. So the purpose of our simulation is to help you gain an understanding of the significant obstacles faced by those attempting to navigate the system. According to Louisiana Department of Public Safety and Corrections website, within five years of being released, 43% of people will return back to prison. This recidivism rate is very high, it's higher than the national average, and it significantly attributes to the crime rate in our community. Excuse me. In our simulation, you will receive a new identity, where you may or may not have money, you may or may not have a job, you may or may not have a place to live, you may or may not have a driver's license, and you have to go through four 15-minute weeks in this identity, all while meeting the terms of your specific supervision. Our ultimate goal of this event is for everyone to become more knowledgeable about the situation and spark new ideas of how we can fix these barriers to lower crime and lower recidivism in our parish. This simulation will be on Friday, December 8th, from 9:00 to 11:00 at First Methodist Church of Shreveport. A couple of our state legislature have already RSVP'd, Bossier City Council, Caddo Commissioners, and the Bossier Police Jury are also invited, so I'd love to see the Shreveport City Council represented there as well. I attended one of these New Orleans recently, and out of all 60 of us there, only two of us managed to stay out of jail the whole time, so it was a lot harder to navigate these barriers than I expected. So it's a fun little game, it can get competitive between friends and colleagues to kind of see who comes out best, you know, who has the most money, who has a full-time job, who's doing the best and all. But it's also really informative of what people realistically, sorry, it's also really informative of what people realistically have to go through, so thank you for your time. You can register by scanning the code on the flyer, or my email's on there, you can just contact me, and I can manually add you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Benjamin Boyd.
Hello? Oh, here we go. Benjamin Boyd, 7710 East Kings Highway. I said I wasn't coming back down here, but I heard I was giving out money, and I was just trying to figure out, where can I get mine? You know, we had people, it's over with? Oh, no. Anyway, we had somebody giving out money that, you know, didn't belong to them. They all said they were doing a good thing, but you know, when you give something that don't belong to you, and it's not yours, it's called stealing. And you know how I know? That's the definition in Webster Dictionary. It's got like about three of them in there, but that's stealing. Now, if I come on your person and take it off you, that's robbery. Check with the police back there. And the only thing I'm thinking about is, the people that he gave the money to, they didn't even ask for it. They already make well above what everybody here in Shreveport makes. I could walk through Queensburg, Allendale, Lakeside, Motown for a whole month and won't run into the kind of money that them people make, unless I bump into one of y'all. We just have to do better, and if you say you don't know, that's sad, too. And I'm shocked that we, as a council, the person is still here. It's over with? So we just can take stuff? I know people that stole candy bars, that went to jail behind a candy bar. I say, "One candy bar?" Yep, one candy bar. And the person is still here. Nothing happened. No charges, nothing. It's just lucky they still here. That's unbelievable to me. And when the trash people wanted their raise, went on for months. You had to talk about it over and over again for the poor trash people. They making $12, $13 an hour, and the only way they could get their raise was that every one of y'all got a raise. Everybody got 13%. You couldn't even let them have it. We are at a place now where we got to just do the right thing. We can't be aligning with somebody because of our skin color. We can't be aligning with somebody because they're Democrat or Republican. We have to align with people that's going to do the right thing, and if we keep aligning with people because we like them or they can do something for us, we're going to keep getting the same results. And there's something else that's blowing my mind. Every time the property and standards dude come up here, y'all don't have no questions for him. I got some questions for him. When is some of this stuff going to be cleaned up? I got a lot of questions for him. He come up here, he chassis up here, and then he chassis out. He doing that good a job? We got to do better. We got to do better. Hey, I love y'all, and I just want y'all to do better.
Yeah, I want to speak on, I made several attempts on last week for City Attorney Marcus Edwards to reach back out to me, and I haven't had any response concerning that situation. So I'm just trying to figure out, was he busy, or what's going on with that?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Anderson, I have drafted a response that I'll get to you, but then the next day.
Okay, thank you.
John Milkovich.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair members, John Milkovich, Keithville, Louisiana. I propose that we reestablish the Caddo Detention Center as a vehicle to remove violent gang members from the streets of Shreveport. I also advocate for more police officers and an increase in police pay. Y'all know the story, police officers are leaving Shreveport, they're being recruited all over the country. And I also believe, if we're going to get real about crime, I think we need to monitor the disposition of gun cases by the district attorney's office. In our recent history in America, we have the demonstration of two different urban approaches to violent crime, including in particular the youth. In the late '90s, in Richmond, Virginia, the homicide rate was out of control and one of the, among the highest in the nation. The authorities there determined that they were going to target specifically persons that committed gun crimes with mandatory sentencing, and they ended up obtaining 247 convictions on gun crimes, they seized over 400 illegal weapons, they saw a 33% drop in homicide in one year, armed robberies dropped 30% in one year, and with the second year of the project, homicide. In our recent history in America, we have the demonstration of two different urban approaches to violent crime, including in particular the youth. In the late nineties, in Richmond, Virginia, the homicide rate was out of control and one of the, among the highest in the nation. The, uh, the authorities there determined that they were going to target specifically persons that committed gun crimes with mandatory sentencing. And they ended up obtaining two hundred and forty-seven convictions on gun crimes. They seized over four hundred illegal weapons. They saw a thirty-three percent drop in homicide in one year. Armed robberies dropped thirty percent in one year. And with the second year of the project, homicides dropped another twenty-one percent, so that in two years, homicide rates dropped by half. We have a very different experience demonstrated in Washington DC. From two thousand and ten to two thousand and seventeen, the Washington DC authorities said that youths that were arrested for serious or violent crimes were not put in jail or prosecuted under the formal judicial system, but they were sentenced under an alternative youth sentencing. And that turned out to be a disaster. Between two thousand and ten and two thousand and seventeen, a hundred and twenty-one youths that were adjudicated through the alternative youth sentencing and not the real system, were later charged with murder. Harvard study, Harvard is not known to be a bastion of conservatism, but a Harvard professor has documented what many scholars have said, that states that in prison, a higher percentage of convicts end up with a lower rate of crime. The youth crime rate in Shreveport, Sheriff Prater says that we have a major problem with the age group from twelve to seventeen. If you talk to Shreveport police officers, they'll tell you, most of the shootings are done by people twenty-five and under. Channel Three stated on July twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, that we now have the highest level of youth crimes in Shreveport since the two thousand and nineteen, since, excuse me, the nineteen nineties. And I will propose to you, and I believe that Professor Wilson from Harvard is saying, as many of us said, the Bible says, accountability, responsibility, and punishment for repeat offenders actually works. And individuals that are behind bars are not able to commit violent crimes against the community. And somehow, I think we've lost our way in thinking that we're too sophisticated to believe in the Bible, too smart to believe in the principles of God. I think we need to listen to the police. They are telling us that gang members are now unafraid of authority. They don't think anything's gonna happen, they go over to juvenile detentions.
Mr. Milkovich, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. John Glover.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
Good evening. John Glover, ninety-one hundred Walker Road, apartment two seventeen, Shreveport seven eleven eighteen. I went over the administrative conference agenda yesterday and today, and early this morning. And I got to the noise amendment, or is it called resolution? Either way, one-ten and one-eleven. They have two amendments attached to them, amendment number one and amendment number two. I read through amendment number one and amendment number two, and I'm no more smarter than what either one said. Now, my question to the author of the legislation is this. What is the end goal, other than us trying to have a cohesiveness of the entertainment district? All of this language, and it is pretty much language. On the first page of amendment one and amendment number two, number five talks about correcting an error. What error? Because I didn't see it. So, someone, please tell me what that error is. See, when you present a document, a documents of these magnitudes, that will impact lives, not just those who will be in the entertainment district, but those who live in those districts as well. And recognizing that those persons probably more than likely had not ever met the level of what has brought us to this point. Now, we're having to face it. Number two, how many, if any, council persons has any interest in these noise ordinances personally? Because I'd like to know that, too. Because I have to understand that what, what once worked now has to be now modified. We need the decimal, we need the this, we need the that. And we're spending an enormous amount of time trying to address this issue. We have so many things going on in our city that needs and requires our immediate attention. Noise level, we need to get it on, on our task. This is just too much of our valuable time being wasted. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Is the city attorney here?
He is.
Can you ask him to come up front?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Attorney Edwards. On Thursday, we had a meeting regarding the noise ordinance. So, individuals will have an understanding of what this, why this ordinance is. Would you would please explain to Ms. Glover the originality of this particular ordinance from the revised ordinances from two thousand and eleven? So, she will understand why the noise ordinance was implemented?
Um, for the purposes of Ms. Glover and anyone else who's asking, the noise ordinance that's currently on the books, what we're referring to colloquially, colloquially, as the noise ordinance lives in, I guess, chapter fifty-eight, was originally written in connection with the advent of the Haynesville shale in the Shreveport area, in the Caddo Parish area. And fracking, which is a technique by which oil and gas are extracted from the earth, is a very loud process. So, the noise ordinance that is on the books was, was, I am informed by the people that, that were working in government at the time, that that ordinance was primarily designed to help protect the public from loud constructions-type noises. What we're looking for now is something that's enforceable, not just throughout the city for purposes of regulating the noise associated with construction, but also that helps us regulate the entertainment businesses, such as bars, nightclubs, restaurants, that are open late at night and provide entertainment, recreational entertainment. So, that's one of the purposes. Another one of the purposes is to make sure that the police department has an enforceable standard by which, an objective standard by which they can enforce the noise ordinance upon these establishments in a way that's fair and impartial. And we also wanted to sort of clean up some of the language and move some of the more technical aspects of sound measurement away from the enforcement stuff. So, um, that's how we got here. I believe one of the questions was seeking clarity as to the purpose of amendment one. Amendment one, there were some typographical errors in the original draft. We also wanted to strengthen some of the language defining the exemptions from the noise ordinance. We wanted to make it very clear that religious institutions were exempted, that, that school activities were exempted. So, we wanted to make sure that it was clear, although some of those exemptions were already in the original draft, we wanted to make that crystal clear that we were not scooping in activity that we were not actually trying to regulate. So, that's how we got to amendment one. We also changed the levels, the sound levels, up a bit so that the level for bars, nightclubs, and restaurants would be seventy decibels until two AM, as opposed to the previous draft, which had it at sixty decibel, sixty-five decibels until midnight. So, that, that was the purpose behind amendment one. I believe, does that answer your questions?
Yes, and thank you. Thank you, Attorney Edwards.
No problem.
Christine Bailey. Good afternoon, Ms. Bailey, you have three minutes.
Good afternoon. Once again, I'm here to ask that we do something about the noise downtown. For not just my sanity, but for many residents and business owners that live downtown. When we moved downtown, we invested everything we had into opening our business and building our residence. And now, we have no peace, because every weekend, it's, we get no sleep. My husband actually, right now, is going under some chemo treatment. And the weekends are when he tries to get some rest, and he can't, because can't sleep. We tried to go out on our balcony Saturday night, and my husband measured the music, and it was seventy-seven decibels on our balcony. So, obviously, we couldn't stay out there because we couldn't enjoy ourselves. Even my cats, one in particular goes and hides when the music starts. So, I'm, I'm asking that we do something about it, because when we moved downtown, we wanted to make it our home. And I'm telling you, we're just about the end of our rope, because we don't get any enjoyment anymore. I have business, I have customers that won't even come to my business during the day. And it's just becoming very unpleasant. And coincidentally, our front window was broke this Saturday night. And it's gonna cost us probably fifteen hundred dollars to fix it. Anyway, so I'm urging you to please help out and make it more enjoyment for the residents and business owners that live downtown, because there's a lot of people that are leaving. And we don't want that for our downtown. We want it to be a thriving downtown, because I think that's very important to a city, and especially important to Shreveport. Thank you.
Thank you. Chase. Mrs. Chase, pronounce your last name correctly.
Boyton.
Boyton.
Yes, ma'am. I also want to start, thank you, Mr. Mayor. They did replace some lights from the last time I came, literally the next day, so I do appreciate that. I came to speak on the noise ordinance. Under normal circumstances, I would never be for the noise ordinance, but we have a really bad problem with crime. I, I personally witnessed some of it in March twenty-fourth. I had some friends that came in from Dallas, and they were staying at the Remington, and they were like, "We haven't seen Fatty's yet." Met me down at Fatty's, I had my cab pick us up, and I went to take them back to Remington. And when we hit the Spring Street corner, there were people hanging out of their cars doing three-sixties. And I looked over at my cab driver, and I said, "Never take this route again." I, I was terrified. And within minutes of that, there was a guy with an AR-15 shooting out, out of his car. And I personally saw, I couldn't sleep that night, I personally saw three or four people on the ground, including an elderly lady. I was terrified. In fact, I called Councilmember Brooks, and I said, "What are we gonna do about this? This is unreal." And since then, we've had several other issues. One night, I spoke of a night that we, I had a break-in. That particular night, the police were not able to stay because they were running off to deal with a shooting on Spring Street. And even my neighbor generals, which is now, I spoke of them last, they're closed now. They had a kitchen member who was an innocent bystander who was shot and killed over on Commerce Street. And, you know, I, I wrote down here, and we had open container from two thousand and three to two thousand and eight, and we had a few fights, and they killed the open container. And I just feel like we all have to, I mean, we have a real problem with crime, and we all have to make a sacrifice. I have, I'm closing at midnight most nights, because it gets so crazy, the lighting, all that type stuff. I've made major sacrifices, and we're barely open. In fact, I've been actively looking to move out of downtown for that very reason. And that's not something I want to do. I've been down there twenty years in the beginning of January. And under no circumstance do I want Hays, or Style, or any particular clubs to be hurt. But I kind of feel like we all need to get together and, and do this together and, and try to curb some of this violence. And I know it's not happening in the clubs, because they're, they're wanding people, and they're doing the right thing. It's happening out on the streets, but what else can we do? We gotta get them off the streets where the violence is happening. And if, if it means we have to turn down the music, I think we have to. I, I'm afraid that's just the, where we have to do. And I, and I feel like we're gonna need more police. We might even need to look at closing businesses earlier, maybe not six AM or whatever. But I definitely think there's a, a real problem, and we, we have to, and, you know, again, under no circumstance do I want to hurt any individual business, but I really hope. Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Tim Huck.
Tim Huck, four fifteen Spring Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. Definition of insanity, continuing to do the same thing expecting a different result. Over the last year and a half or so in downtown Shreveport, as the music levels have gone up, so have the crime rate. I recently have attempted to resign and waiting on someone to replace my position on the DDA, which I have sat for almost six years, seven years. I'm resigning my position, because as a DDA, you're supposed to be an ambassador for downtown, and we're only supposed to talk about what's great in downtown. And unfortunately, downtown is not great right now. People used to talk about it's not safe downtown, and I would say, "No, that's a perception." Unfortunately, to most people, perception is reality. But what has happened is their perception has turned into reality. The number of people shot downtown and killed downtown is at the highest it has ever been, and I've been downtown for a long time. This is not all to blame on one thing. This is not all to blame on a high noise level. And I plainly and one-hundred percent understand that. However, the noise level does increase the crowds. And it was proven the other night when they closed down on a Saturday night, when the weather was absolutely perfect outside, and there was no one on the street, and there was no arrests made around there, and there was no issues and no fights. The noise levels alone are not causing all the issues, but the noise levels are contributing to the issues. And if we continue to do the same thing and expect a different result, we are, by definition, insane. Chairman, I love that you brought up to the airport authority and asked them about the noise, because there's multiple people who live downtown that stay downtown. And those noise levels that are coming from those bars, and not just one bar, multiple bars, the noise levels that are coming are causing them not to sleep and disturbing their peace. And as your constituents are concerned about their peace, Mr. Brooks' constituents are concerned about theirs also. I appreciate your care for your constituents and for the city, and I hope you have the same care for Mr. Brooks' constituents in his city, and, and this city. I keep hearing people talk about Bill Street and Bourbon Street. Well, the difference is, is to get to Bill Street and get to Bourbon Street and get to buildings that are surrounding Bill Street and Bourbon Street, you don't have to drive through Bill Street and through Bourbon Street. You don't have to drive on Bill Street and drive on Bourbon Street. But to get to my establishment, to get to the casinos, to get to the Remington, you have to drive past Texas and Spring Street. And where the problems are coming, okay, it's not Bill Street and Bourbon Street, and it's never gonna be. Thank y'all.
Crystal Montez.
Hello. I have severe buyer's remorse. How many people are moving from North Bossier to Shreveport? I did that, and I can't sleep. Five oh-nine Market, beautiful historic building. I wanted to be a part of something great, and I wanted to be a part of downtown Shreveport. Unfortunately, the past three weekends, my first weekend that I moved in, I had to call a friend late at night and ask them if I could spend the night, because the noise is deafening. I, I love what I do for a living. On the weekends, I also DJ. I've done several events where I've been at the Remington, and they have this beautiful, beautiful outdoor setting. But I know that I have until eleven o'clock, until a, till a club decides to turn their music on, and it will overpower anything I have. I could sit here and tell you, "Hey, I have this speaker, and this is how loud it can get," but I get it, it doesn't really make sense. But what I can tell you is that I am on a time crunch every single time I go to the Remington, and I want to have a successful, fun wedding. It's affecting, I'm sure brides and grooms there. And now, it's affecting me to the point where I can't sleep. I'm tired, I'm exhausted. I don't know how people are, I mean, I'm, I'm stuck. I have a lease, I'm there for a year. I want to be a part of something great, and I believe that Shreveport can be great. I believe that downtown Shreveport has the ability to flourish, and I hear these great stories about what Shreveport once was. I'm originally from California, so I, I do believe that downtown Shreveport has the potential to be something great, because I've seen it. I've seen it in other states, I've seen it in other cities. Please consider all of us, please. We're tired, we're exhausted. Please think of all of us that use downtown to live, to work, to play. Please be sure to draft an ordinance that protects all of us. Thank you. Thank you.
That concludes public comments.
Thank you. Tomorrow, we will have executive appointments. There are no items on the consent agenda for introduction or to be adopted. Mr. Dart, would you proceed with regular agenda legislation?
Yes, sir. 166 of 2021 was postponed last time until November the 14th. 118 recognizes Ms. Cindy Dyer for her service to the Board of Realtors. Y'all postponed that last time, because she was not able to be here. 121 honors the, the late Patrina Gay Jenkins for her work in, in domestic abuse prevention. That's sponsored by Ms. Taylor. 122 recognizes October of this, this year as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and Men Wear Pink of Northwest Louisiana in Their Fight Against Breast Cancer, also sponsored by Ms. Taylor. 123 recognizes and honors Mary Ann Nelson for her service to the city. She is the soon-to-be retiring manager of the Downtown Hilton, and will be here tomorrow. 124 recognizes October 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and, and specifically recognizes Project Celebration for its work to prevent and to assist the victims of, of domestic violence.
Are there any questions or comments on any of those items? If not, Mr. Dart, would you proceed with introduction of resolutions tonight to be adopted prior to October 24th, 2023?
125 acknowledges that the City Council has reviewed the 2022 Internal Municipal Water Pollution Prevention Report concerning the city's two treatment plants. We noticed in the process of getting ready for this, that you were not provided that report to review, so it is on its way to you. I believe it was sent to, to the clerk sometime in about the last few minutes by Mr. White. So it will be there for you to look at between now and then. The next four or five items, I believe 126 through 130, are all involving the retiring of various police canines who've reached the end of their service and generally are being donated to, to their handlers or to someone in the handling community. 131 authorizes the acceptance of donation of Lake Shreve Estate's water system. You may remember, we got a grant earlier this year from the state of Louisiana, in effect, to help us take over that system, and also to, to, about $5 million for other things, and this was a condition of getting that money. They have provided us a hold harmless, they provided us a maintenance bond in part for two years, but this is, this is a part of what we agreed to with the state some time ago.
Are there any questions or comments on any of those items? Mr. Dart, would you proceed with introduction of ordinance not to be adopted prior to October 24?
119, excuse me, yeah, 119 amends the 2023 Capital Improvements Budget. This is a part of what we were going to introduce last time. These are the pieces of the proposed ARP funding that deal with parks and public buildings. This includes $4 million for building work, which includes HVAC work at City Courts, that's at the Convention Center, at Riverview, Seaport. It also includes a good bit of work to try to waterproof and, and make a little bit safer the environment at City Court. It also includes 1.2 million for a pool and spray ground to replace the one that does not work at all at Bill Cockrell Park. It includes $1 million to the Choice Neighborhoods project, which would allow us to come as about as close as we can to finishing what was promised at the CC Antoine Park, and it includes $50,000 to relocate the bike and walking trail along the parkway away from where the erosion has occurred.
Are there any questions on this item? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Dart, when you do the fact sheet on each one of these, can you break it down, what's going on at each place?
I'm sorry?
When I looked at the fact sheet, it don't show, like, each individual item, what's going to, what's going to happen there. So I was asking, like, when you move all of this money for different deals, if you can break it down, so we can know exactly, I mean, you just told us, but when I was reading over this last night, I didn't actually know. And when I looked at the fact sheet, it's not on the fact sheet.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, the, I, I'll have to look at it, because, I mean, it says that it's $4 million for the HVAC and building work, and a million for Choice Neighborhoods, and $50,000 for the parkway work, and a million, too, for the pool, so.
Right. You told us that it was for the CC Antoine, but if you hadn't spoke about that, when I was reading it, the fact sheet just don't tell exactly where the money is going.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, 120 through 138 are the budget ordinances for 2024. I believe the order that we were provided by your staff is that we will do a short budget overview tomorrow, and then these will, at some point, be, I don't know, tabled or postponed or whatever, until probably your first meeting in December. Let's see, 1, okay, that's all, that's all the first reading, excuse me.
Are there any questions? Mr. Dart, would you proceed with ordinance on second reading and final passage?
110 and 111 are noise ordinances, and if you wish to discuss those, I would think we probably want to bring the city attorney back up. If not, save them for later. 112 declares public emergency in connection with the repairing of one of the high-service pumps at the Amos Water Plant. This one is only coming to you because it ended up exceeding the $150,000 threshold when we originally declared the, the emergency. 113 is a United Development Code, Code Amendment, which mostly provides for how to deal with signs which are abandoned or dilapidated or a hazard in one way or the other, and allows zoning more specific authority to cite the owners. 114 is, is also a UDC amendment. It provides more, more specifics about, basically, it calls queuing in vehicle stacking areas. It means if you've got a drive-through or something like that, or an ATM, that you've got to have enough room away from other traffic in order to let people be in line. 115 is, is also a UDC amendment. It has several different things. One of them is to make clear what exactly is waterfront, waterfront property, how to regulate lighting, which is taller than normal, and how the UDC basically does not in any way enforce private agreements. 116 is a zoning case, 23, 123C, property on Lakeshore, near Dill League, basically going from single-family to C1 commercial. This is a, basically going to be shelter housing in an existing home. They originally asked for a particular different residential class, but MPC thought they needed commercial zoning to do this. They ended up approving it unanimously. This is in Miss Bowman's district. 117 is zoning case 23, 155C. This is property at Cotton and McNeil. Someone wants to use an existing historic building for storage. It was approved 6 to 2 by the MPC. The DDA, I believe, spoke in opposition to it at that time. And 118 is zoning case 23, 150, excuse me, 155. Oh, I did them out of order, I'm sorry. 117, I just did 118. 117 is the, oh, let me back up. I'm sorry, I had them wrong. The last one, 118, is Linwood, just south of 83rd, for, I believe, a Dollar General store, from residential to commercial.
Are there any questions on any of those items? Mr. Clark, would you come up, please?
Mr. Clark, are you aware of a halfway house at 764 TECU MESH in Cherokee Park?
No, we're not.
You're not?
No.
Nothing that you are aware of with zoning or anything like that?
And I'll check it again, but we have been monitoring halfway houses very closely, because there are some arguments from the providers that they should be treated exactly like group homes, and we feel that halfway houses are still connected to the criminal justice system in transition, and that's why we require special use permits. So we'll check this one out to make sure that it's, it's been properly investigated.
So you would definitely have to have a special use permit for a halfway house in a residential neighborhood?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question for you, too. Mr. Clark sent you up. I was going to ask you about ordinance 116. I'm going to ask to postpone this for two weeks tomorrow.
Which one is that?
It's the, kind of like a group home on Letcher Drive.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and the reason was, when I did talk to the citizens that live in that area, there was letters sent out, but the letters went out to the actual homeowners, not the renters. So the person that owns the property, property won't be impacted, it'll be with the people that's living there. So I'm going to ask to postpone it for two weeks, just so we can kind of figure out how we do.
I understand, we, because when we're making changes to property, only the property owners can consent to changes in zoning, and that's why we send the letters out to the property owners, because that property is theirs, and it's their responsibility. A lot of times, we don't know who the tenants are.
Right.
But our information will direct us to the actual landowners.
Right, but when it goes to the landlord, the landlord don't tell the renter what's getting ready to happen in their neighborhood, and that causes a whole another group of problems.
And that's why, and, and, and I understand perfectly, and I agree with you. That's why we instituted the Neighborhood Participation Plan process, because we found that we were just sending notifications to property owners, but with the Neighborhood Participation Plan process, we sent notifications to addresses, and that would have given, and we didn't do one in this case, but I think we did do one. We did one, but it was very poorly attended.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, is there any table legislation to be removed from the table today? We have no property standards, ABO appeals to consider today. We, we will have MPC's ZBA appeal to consider tomorrow. Madam Clerk, are there any other appeals?
No, sir.
Are there any reports from officers, boards, and committees? Madam Clerk, is there a clerk's report? Executive session, none. If there's nothing else to come before this body, we stand adjourned.